Hi, so welcome everyone to our work session. It's Tuesday, October 27th. It is 5:38. And you just need to take attendance. If you could just say present when your name is called. Scott?
Present.
Carrie?
Here, present.
Oh my gosh, she's here. Eric?
Here.
Francine?
Here.
Jason is with us remotely.
Present.
Myself, so.
Present.
And we're just missing Daisy, who is away on a family matter this time. Okay. So she'll try to again if she can. Alright, so we are good to go. If we could just stand for the pledge.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we just try to fix Carrie's microphone again? Try to.
Seems fine, okay.
There you go. Okay. Okay. So, our work session today is on the NISBA resolutions. So, we discussed this a little bit at a previous meeting. Basically, what this is, is once a year, all the boards in New York State meet for their annual business meeting. A representative from each school district is present. We're gonna be doing it virtually this year. And we vote on the resolutions that we would like NISBA, New York State School Boards Association, to advocate for us and all the school districts collectively in Albany. And each year they present, well, basically first, just a little more history. It starts off, some of us already know. School districts throughout the year submit a resolution and the NISBA meets and discusses it. And they put together their suggestions back to the group in terms of what they propose for us to adopt. And then some that they will say they suggest to not be adopted. So we're gonna go through those. You can let me know how to vote. My meeting is this Saturday morning. So what I'll do is I will read the resolution. And then we just have a brief discussion. You can let me know how you'd like me to vote. We can, you know, discuss questions and answer questions, whatever. So the first resolution that's proposed is a sunsetting resolution, so they'd like to bring it back. Not have it just expire. It's resolved that the New York State School Boards Association shall advocate for an overhaul of the current inadequate testing system to more accurately measure achievement in skills, knowledge, and abilities. And it shall do this by, and it lists some specifics on how they'd like to do that. Basically, they'd like to have them advocate, working collaboratively with New York State Ed, insist that educators throughout the state be included. And that there is a, the district personnel be permitted to examine test results, answer keys, and their students' responses, so the educators can better assess what each child is learning and in a timely fashion to truly inform instruction. And they go into a whole discussion about why. So, any questions on this, thoughts? Or you can just tell me how you'd like me to vote.
Can we simplify it a little bit by going through each one unless someone has an objection? It would be a yes.
Well, for the sake of the public that's watching, I need to read.
No, that's fine. But if you would need to, you can say yes. And we just assume it's a yes and if someone has an objection.
Okay. Anyone have any objection to this? I'll vote yes unless you tell me no.
No objection from me.
Resolution, post resolution two, resolve, NISBA shall support legislation that makes it easier for districts to recover attorney's fees in legal cases related to special education where the district is the prevailing party. Basically, this has to do with there's, they feel an abuse of the system in terms of attorneys kind of asking for more information, you know, when it might be not as needed. So any objections to this, or thoughts?
I don't necessarily have an objection, but I think it should be more specific in terms of, not just a prevailing party. I think it should be an appeal or a request for information that's more frivolous. I mean, I think, you know, maybe it is the attorneys that are pushing these sorts of things. But just because the school district prevails, I'm not sure that it should be recovering fees from parents, because that might chill the effect of parents bringing these cases. And we don't want to do that. At the same time, we want to stop frivolous suits against the district, I think.
Okay. So. So the vagueness for you is, what aspects? Like if you're saying it's not specific enough, then what can be recovered?
My point is, I don't want to chill parents being able to bring these types of cases, because they're gonna be afraid that if they lose, even though they might have a meritorious claim against the district, that if they lose, they're gonna have to pay attorney's fees. I don't want to chill parents' right to bring meritorious claims against the district. At the same time, we need to ensure that attorneys are not bringing frivolous suits against a school district.
Well, the way I read this is, it says attorneys have discovered a way to abuse the system. So it's not about the parents. The parents may have an appropriate claim, but it's more about how the attorneys go about.
But the language, Sonia, of the resolve says where the district is the prevailing party. Doesn't say anything about whether or not the claims are frivolous or not. So that says to me, if the district prevails, no matter if the claims were meritorious, that the district can seek attorney's fees from the parents. If I'm reading that wrong, you know, but that's how, that's what I would see.
I would just add, though, that the resolution just says it can support legislation that makes it easier for districts to recover attorney's fees. Not that they wouldn't necessarily recover them, simply like, you know. You know, so, and there is, of course, always the opportunity to get sanctions against people who do bring frivolous cases. But I think this is just supporting some sort of legislation. It doesn't necessarily mean you get them simply because you're bad. It's just saying that it's gonna make it easier. I don't know what that means. I don't think anybody knows what it means to move legislation directly.
Would you have a suggestion, Jason? And how you would amend the language? Because basically, that's what you mentioned.
I would amend it to say something like, where the district is the prevailing party, something to the effect of where the claims have been deemed to be frivolous.
But what if it's not frivolous, it's a legitimate case, but the attorneys still abuse, the points that attorneys in either case, frivolous or not, are abusing a way that they've found to make more money, just because, you know, it's not about the case, it's about.
So then are we saying that the attorney's fees, the attorney is gonna be responsible? Or the parents are gonna have to pay those attorney's fees?
How do you read it?
No, it's not for the attorneys, unless they're sanctioned personally. It's gonna be the party who would have to pay the fees. I don't know if students', parents of students' are entitled to recover their attorney's fees in these types of actions that they get. It may just be rather unifying. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if the student slash parents are entitled to recover attorney's fees if they get it.
Yeah, so that's my issue. I don't wanna, my concern is that parents would be responsible for paying attorney's fees.
I get your point, in terms of an attorney is abusing the system or whatever, why should the parent suffer for that?
And I guess that depends on if the retainer agreeing between the parents and the attorney. If the parents are paying attorney's fees, are in pocket, then it's one thing. But if the attorney's retention is based on recovery from a school district, then I guess it's gonna depend on that sort of relationship. But that was my concern.
Sonia, do you have the opportunity? Is this just a yes or no vote, or do you have the opportunity to raise a protest?
So, normally you do. It's normally, they're putting us in a two-hour window, though. Normally it's four. So, I'm not sure exactly how they're gonna run it in terms of, normally yes, so I could, you know, raise an issue with the language. And then try to get, they would put it to the floor if people want to vote to discuss it. So what else? I'll just make it no.
Sonia, and maybe there's been discussion that maybe it is against attorneys personally and not parents, and it's just not revealed here in the rationale. But I'm, you know, just going by the rationale, what I see here, that's my concern.
Okay. So what I'll do is I have the notes. Do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just have, I have the concern that making, voting yes for this will have more of an impact on our lower socioeconomic population, because they're gonna be even more hesitant to get a lawyer. And some districts, they really do need to hire a lawyer to get what is necessary for their child. And knowing that if they don't, if they're not the prevailing party, they're gonna have to reimburse or pay back the fees to the school district, it's important to not do what they need to do.
Okay.
Put them in a disadvantage, as opposed to a district like Chapel Cod that can take that chance.
So what I'm thinking is, if there's opportunity, and there usually is, we can come up and comment, and I can address that concern. And if the language stays as is, I can vote no, because we're, I mean, unless what's the majority think? I just need a consensus of how you all think. I can vote no if the language stays as is, which is vague in certain areas.
So the only thing I would add is, I completely understand Jason and Francine's points, and I support them, but I don't think that's what this resolution is saying. I think it's just saying that NISBA will support legislation that will potentially move the needle in one direction. I don't, I'm not reading this as, once this happens, I mean, if those were the definitive outcomes of this resolution, then I would absolutely say vote no. But I think there's still gonna be a level of responsibility and there's a lot of things that are gonna happen before this moves forward. And not the least of which is, I don't know that most school districts would support a wholesale changing of the playing field. It's more, you know, they kind of speak to, in the rationale, they speak to the idea that this is a limited number of cases based on what they are putting forward as a limited number of attorneys who are using loopholes, funding and training other attorneys to do the same thing. It's almost like a unscrupulous practice that they're trying to weed out, not necessarily to simply shift the burden of these cases to the families.
And Eric may be totally correct in that, but I just wanted to voice that.
Okay, so who's yes, no, or if and then? Now Francine, where are you on this?
Right, I'm always nervous of changing legislation in regards to specialized, so I would probably not want to back it. Can I change my seat? Because I'm right in front of the speaker. There's a box right behind me. And it's like.
Yeah, you guys don't try switching. Okay, okay, so.
I'm not against the concept of the school district recovering legal fees, but like I said, frivolous claims. And again, I agree with Eric that there's a lot that's gonna happen after this and before it gets to orbiting. But I would just like a clarification in terms of, you know, just to be sure, this is not something that parents would be responsible for. But I agree with Eric. I don't think school districts would, school districts, you know, we're here for our children. They're not, you don't want to penalize parents for bringing claims. But when I read it, that was the first thing that popped in my head, you know, parents who are bringing these claims, you know, really the attorney, so. So that was just my concern. I wouldn't be, I'm not against this concept.
Okay. Eric?
I would actually be interested to know, Dr. Bama, do we have this issue in Brewster? And is this something that we're seeing sort of going on here?
So I have not seen that since I've been here in my one-on-one years. But I could see this possibly being a problem. So I think clarifying the language is probably a really good idea. And, you know, I think Sonia taking that to the floor is the best bet.
Okay.
We have, we have situations, litigation law situations, where it is cheaper to settle and resolve the matter than to litigate it. And school districts are often presented with that predicament, even when they have a strong case. So I think it's not simply about punishing parents who have lawyers who are really aggressive or frivolous, but sort of recognizing that it puts districts in very difficult situations where they, they should litigate and win, but they don't, because the cost is so exorbitant, that it's simply not, it's not financially feasible to do it. So, I mean, there's, you know, this is just a concept. This isn't a law. This isn't what the law would say that would have got that far. It's just, it's just an idea. And it could very well be that they come up with something where a district is able to recover attorney's fees if they can show X, Y, and Z. Not just simply that they won't. So I think I would be in full, in favor of it, because I don't think it would get to the point where parents would have to pay a district's attorney's fees, because that absolutely would chill their, you know, ability to bring these types of actions, which is inappropriate. But it's really just a concept. But I don't have a problem with the concept.
Okay, so for me, I agree with what everyone's saying, that I agree with the concept. I agree that the language is a little vague. And of course, none of us want the parents to suffer. So I'll see what I can do in terms of getting language changed on it. Okay, and Scott?
I believe it's not the text. This is, if you compare most of these, the resolutions are generally a little soft on language. I think that's the concept behind them. But if you read through the rationale, what it points out are the specific things they're trying to target. So we can't just say a lot of these resolutions are 100% literal, unless, like a school district, we're going specifically for a certain purpose. Most of it is just the general concept of level of the playing field. We never want anything to damage any of our families and their rights, but it's just a concept that we have to get through and, you know, deal with the state. It's all about language. So if they put something too specific in the resolution, they're hindering themselves from the development process. So I'm in full, I'm in favor of it as written.
Okay. Do you two want to switch real quick?
I would love to. I'm sorry.
In the meantime, I'll read the next one. Okay, resolution three. NISBA shall support legislation that would shift the burden of proof in special education due process complaints away from the district and back to the party seeking relief. This one, again, yeah, if you read the rationale for this one, it was interesting. They put a lot of history in here. And how, how this changed, with the shift, the burden of proof to the school districts, the percentage went up 40%. So. Thoughts on this one?
I'll start off by saying I'm not. I'm not loving this resolution, just because, I don't know, I'm torn by this resolution. I know it, the district spends a lot of money on, with the burden placed on it. At the same time, that could cripple a family if they have to bear the burden of proof. So I'm, I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts on this. I'm a little torn on this. You know, some parents may be able to shoulder this burden better than others. So I'm torn on this.
So maybe, can I ask Dr. Bama your thoughts? Because so for me, I need help understanding, like, why would the burden of proof be on the school district? Why wouldn't it be, if I'm, you know, if I'm the party seeking relief, how can I come to you and say, here's a problem? Now you've proved to me why it's not a problem. It seems backwards to me. So I agree with this, but I'm trying to understand why we even got to being, the law being the way it is right now.
So, you know that I came from another state, and the burden of proof was on the families. And I hate to say that, because I don't want to throw anything more on our families.
Well, for comparison, it helps.
But just for comparison purposes, I know our special ed department spends an inordinate amount of time on this. So, you know, it's very, very time-consuming on either side. And you can only imagine Dr. Kennedy's office in having to work through each of these things, and the cost for the district. I'm just throwing that out there, just as informational for the board. So, just for, you know, just for you to think about.
Is it? No, thank you. I mean, generally speaking, if you bring an action and you're seeking relief, it's your burden that is the typical standard. So if you have a problem with something, you have to prove that the other party, you know, did or didn't do what you're saying they did or didn't do. And the fact that, I mean, the statistics that they provide, that since this shift was made in New York, that 40% of the due process complaints in the United States are filed in New York. So, you know, that almost wants to bring you back to the one we did, the resolution we just discussed about legal fees for districts. You know, parents and whoever may be bringing a due process complaint, have the, they have the ability to have an attorney. So it's not that they have to do this on their own. They can have representation in these situations. So to me, it seems, I mean, I would be in support of this, because based on just typical practice in the field of justice and the statistic about the increase in New York. I mean, that's kind of staggering.
I actually, I agree with Carrie. I would be in support of this also.
Is it on?
Yeah, I would just, I would also point out that some of the statistics they give as far as the per capita rates of challenging these or instituting these claims is five times in states where the burden is on, is on the district. Again, goes right back to what Jason started the last resolution conversation with, which is, never want to do anything that would potentially prevent someone from applying for and going through the process of providing needed instruction for their kids. But I mean, some of the, the way, it just doesn't seem to be working out that way. So I would, saying that, I would support this, support this resolution.
Question, why, why was the burden shifted to the school districts in the first place?
It doesn't sound.
I don't know. Ask Albany, or.
Or the New York, whatever district put this up.
No, they're asking to shift it back. We have to go find out what happened in, what, 2007? All right, so the majority is okay with yes? Okay, number four. NISBA seek legislative and/or policy changes that would mandate local industrial development agencies to include affected school districts in the development of any payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreements. This inclusion must be initiated at the earliest stages of any pilot consideration.
That always comes up at budget time, why do we agree to these things? And why don't we say no? Well, we don't agree and we don't say no, because we have no right or power to. This might give us an option, and then from a financial aspect of all the school districts got together, they could determine a little bit, because it is directly affecting our budget. So to have a little insight, that would not be a bad thing. So I would be in favor.
I agree.
Yep. Jason?
That's fine.
Number six. NISBA support proposals to expand opportunities and capacity for online learning.
I think you missed five.
Oh, five? Oh, sorry. NISBA support legislation at the state and/or federal level that would allow and enhance the sharing of services amongst school districts and other municipalities.
I'm in favor of that.
C2?
Yes.
Good here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Global proposals, so more savings for better.
Okay. Good. So six. Online learning. So this one, as some of you already know, West Putt yearly has a meeting where they on the districts meet, we all meet, and go over these and kind of get a sense of what our neighboring districts, where they stand, to bring it back to our discussion. So on this particular one, they have wanted an amendment for this one. Their concern was, consensus was to support the resolution. The prevailing view was that the addition of the phrase, "provided online learning enhances educational opportunities for students," was perverse. The concern was the potential for moving to increased online learning solely for cost savings would not be beneficial for students. Allowing students access to a wider list of course offerings via online learning was definitely supported by the group. So.
Can you say what they wanted to add again?
Yeah, they wanted to add, "provide online learning enhances," "provided online learning enhances educational opportunities for students." So it wasn't just about using, going online in a cost-savings approach, more about specifically because kids benefit, and if not, don't do it, just because it's cheaper.
So is that what the School Boards Association is saying? That they would support it with that amendment?
Yeah. They support it, they would just prefer it with that amendment. So it was a yes, just if it had this language, it'd be stronger. Which I agree.
Yeah, increases opportunities. Like years ago in the middle school, we didn't have the Chinese exchange program. We did do an online, where the students attended online. And it's not that we were not having a teacher, we were giving them an option that we didn't have. So it does, the amended language does offer opportunities.
Okay.
Yes.
Seven. NISBA should support proposals to incorporate pre-kindergarten funding into the school aid formulas used for K-12 education. So basically, they wanted it, there to be an established, ongoing funding source through a formula-based aid, the way we get, you know, aid now. Where is everyone standing on this?
Yes.
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 Eight. NISBA oppose proposals to raise the number of charter schools authorized in the state.
Big fat, yes.
Yes.
They take.
Nine. NISBA should oppose proposals to expand mayoral control to school districts beyond New York City.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, see your thumbs up. Ten. NISBA support proposals to regulate and restrict the use of tobacco products among youth.
If necessary, yes.
Against the law.
Maybe, no, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Eleven. NISBA seek legislative support to allow for more than one board member to simultaneously attend a New York State Office of State Comptrollers Audit Exit Conference. So that one, we just went through an audit, they had to get ahold of me to just ask me some questions and do whatever, and I reported back. I think it's always good to have two people in a room, just us, so it's fine. Anyone, anyone's good? Twelve. NISBA supports legislation that makes it clear that public school districts are not responsible for assessing the substantial equivalency of education delivered in non-public schools. Dr. Bram?
I would say yes.
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 Since I know we have.
Another burden shifting issue.
Yes.
Burden shifting, no money, so.
Yes.
All right. Thirteen was another one that West Putt had a discussion about. So this one says, NISBA supports legislation to authorize bidirectional communication between New York school districts and the New York State Immunization Information System to allow for the efficient query and transfer of student immunization data. So they couldn't really come to a consensus. So, what do you think, what you heard? Their notes were, additional information requested is not readily available, the ease of ensuring that school nurses can download information from NISIS, is that how we're saying that? Instead of having to re-enter immunization data, was readily supported. The concern was over the bidirectional nature of the resolution. Unless the school nurse is the medical professional providing the immunizations, there was a concern over allowing or requiring the school nurses to upload student data provided by the family into, let's get registered. So, Dr. Bram, thoughts on it?
Yeah, I worry about the data of students being released. We need to have some more assurances to know, yeah, that's right, it's protected for our students.
So I think the intention was to help make it easier, the one less step in the process, but the way it is written, it would shift the responsibility to the nurses that are the family, if I'm understanding it correctly, and it should stay with the family. So would it even be a no for this? Jason, any thoughts?
But the School Boards Association is supporting it.
The School Boards Association put it forth for consideration for adoption. What happens is, so if the school board put this forward as a resolution for consideration by all the school districts, NISBA gets together and decides amongst them, all right, which ones they think are viable or strong. And.
And this is one that they.
Could they put it down for no decision?
West, West, Westchester Public School Boards put it down as no decision, meaning as a collective group in that discussion with districts, they couldn't come up with a consensus amongst them. So some said yes, some said no. So it's really up to us however we want, and I'll vote that way.
So am I clear when I think that on one side is greater efficiency, which is why we would vote yes, on the other side is student data, which is why we would vote no?
Yeah. Student data plus the responsibility to fall on the nurse.
Who didn't do the vaccination.
Who didn't do it, right.
So she's verifying for something that she doesn't, who then's responsible, right? Because if she's inputting it, then it actually runs on her, but she's not the person that threw that the initial.
I mean, it's, but it's data entry, I mean, she's not certifying.
She doesn't do that now.
Yeah. She's not, this isn't saying that she provided the immunizations, it's just she entered the data.
Right, well, in the rationale, it says, currently, due to a flawed technicality in New York State law, school nurses must manually download each student's immunization information one at a time from the statewide database. Then, one by one, we enter each student's history within the school district. If this technicality thing was fixed, school nurses could just transfer students' immunization history directly from the database to the local database, doing so would save hours of time. So it would reduce the likelihood of clerical errors.
The only issue is that it goes both ways, that the school districts would have to communicate with the New York State Immunization Information System, and that's where the problem is, because we can't release, so if we have information about a student that for some reason they don't, our nurse can't disclose that information. So I think, isn't that the problem that they're having with it?
That they.
Because the way it's written, it seems great.
They'd be uploading the data to the state information, right?
The way it's written, it would be that the nurses are pulling information from the state database. That seems fine, that seems great, much easier for the nurses. But because it says up in the language that it's bidirectional communication.
Yeah, correct.
Means that the state, the immunization, you know, may come back to a nurse and say, what do, wait a minute, what do you have on this kit? And then the nurse is in a position where she should not be disclosing that information. It seems like that.
That's how, right, and that's what they started on with.
Yeah.
So that word is causing the problem. If it was just one way.
If based on privacy concerns, it'd be safe to still vote no.
If they maybe just.
Unless they could fix it.
Right.
Ultimate legislation.
Unless they had some assurances.
Right, I mean, they couldn't, they couldn't legislate in a way that would conflict with other legislation that protects student information. So any legislation ultimately, they'd have to be consistent. So it probably wouldn't happen, but it's a fair enough complaint about the way it's written, I guess. The idea seems good.
Yeah.
But I don't know whether you'd vote no or you'd vote yes.
Well, unless they, I think the bidirectional piece was fixed, I agree with no unless we fix that piece. Right?
That's reasonable.
Okay. Right. Number fourteen. NISBA supports legislation that would enable the Commissioner of Education to declare alternate election arrangements in cases where a disaster substantially interrupts the scheduled school board budget flow.
You know all about that.
Yeah, we do.
We know that very well.
I say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
NISBA seek to support legislation that would provide for training and certification for professional parent advocates to attend committee on special education meetings and hearings. Can I ask Dr. Bram, or can I just, for me, because here, the way it says, I need some help with a parent advocate person, because here it's saying that some can come in, be confrontational and adversarial, and they should get training. So what's, how does that work, how was the goal?
You know, Bram seems in the specialized business as well, but I think parent advocate is very important for some families because they do need that spokesperson, and I think that the training would really be helpful after, you know, set in many meetings where you've had really great parent advocates, and you've had that, some that just were not as effective as they could be for families, so I'm supportive of this, just my perspective.
But it's helpful, too, right?
It'd be helpful, yes.
Yeah. I think the training, I think having proper training and certification is needed because sometimes there's such a, some, there are some that are very aggressive, and it doesn't.
And not as effective.
An advocate's supposed to help build a relationship between, right, it's a, from ages three to age twenty-one, a relationship between the parents and the school district. So that's the purpose of the advocate's supposed to play, so after a year.
And also, if I could add one, they also will understand the school district's perspective if they're trying to.
I agree, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, good, all right. Sixteen. NISBA support legislation that promotes the reduction in costs associated with an impartial hearing, independent evaluations requests, and attorney fees associated with due process claims.
Yeah, this would be a win-win for parents and the schools. Parents wouldn't have the risk knowing that their costs would be reduced.
I mean, I don't know how they're gonna do it, but it sounds like a good idea.
That was my question, how's this gonna work?
Yeah.
Is it aligned with I D N?
Don't figure.
It's an idea, you know, it's a eye in the sky.
Jason?
Oh, agree.
NISBA support increased state and federal funding to provide educational equity by addressing the digital divide created by limited access to technology and broadband. So basically, they just discuss, you know, some districts, students can use their own devices, but those issues were bad, and then some don't have access, so just funding to support, especially in the world we're living in now.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay. NISBA oppose mid-year state aid cuts to allow for educational continuity and fiscal stability for school districts.
Yes.
Yes.
I got a problem. Hell, yeah.
Jason? Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, just to point out, as you guys see, it says which districts, school districts submitted these resolutions, so during the course of our, I mean, it could be starting this week, if there's something that we come up with, and track them through the course of the year that we want, we think it'd be great to put forth, then, you know, we should do that. Okay, nineteen. NISBA produce and widely recommend the adoption of a board policy or language to be added to the existing policy related to child abuse, stating that the adopting district will encourage and facilitate all school personnel, including those who are mandated reporters and those who are not, to participate once every three years in a courseful workshop that presents information related to signs of child abuse and responsibilities of reporting it.
We do this every year, so, yeah, yes.
I was gonna ask, don't we, don't we do this?
Everyone may not.
So I'm wondering if that's just, that's just our personal staying on top of things, but, so I'm thinking we could say yes, because clearly some districts don't have it in place if it's put forward.
Yeah, but it also ties to one of the ones that they have under the not approved.
Yes.
Same district that's, I guess, expanding on this, and they don't.
So we can say yes to that, too, and bring it back?
Yeah.
Because they're not off the table, they're just suggested to, yes. NISBA support the proposed New York Health Act and any legislation at the state or federal level that provides single-payer health care for all new workers.
So these ones are not recommended?
Correct. So, so my vote is opposite with these. So if, for example, no carries, then it gets to the floor for discussion for adoption. First, it's, do you want, are we in agreement with NISBA that this should be not adopted? So that's the first vote on these, and if the majority's no, meaning you want it to go forward, then it goes to that discussion. So the first question then is, do you, do we agree with not adopting this resolution?
Before we get to these, I'm gonna have to leave, I have, I'm already late for my police before meeting.
Okay, no, no, we knew that.
So I'm gonna have to take leave, and you guys.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, thank you for joining, it's a question you said, okay.
Okay, and Bram?
Okay, so, yeah, we're, we're, you understand?
Based on the rationale, it makes sense. I guess it's a little bit above my pay grade, you know, patient versus statewide insurance, but see if they have a reason for it, or maybe it's declassification.
I mean, their explanation is not, not particularly strong, I don't think.
So, I mean, I think the idea that there would be savings to school budgets if the healthcare costs came down is self-explanatory, but this feels a little bit outside of our lane to.
So the Resolutions Committee that said to table it, basically, what did they say? Ultimately decided that this was a national issue, more appropriately addressed at the national level, more than the state level, so. So are we okay with yes on this one? Yes, keep it not to hold on? Okay, twenty-one. NISBA support legislation that requires every child in New York State aged zero to twenty-one be covered for free under the Child Health Plus program. They said, the committee recognized the importance, but ultimately decided that the issue is part of the broader issue of health care, similar in concept of proposed Resolution twelve. The committee believed the proposal was beyond the scope of students and education and is an issue more appropriately addressed at the national level. Thoughts on this one?
Same.
Yep.
It goes with.
NISBA support legislation which requires the state of New York to hold school districts harmless for employee and retiree health care increases that exceed the Consumer Price Index. They said, they share the concerns, the rising costs, however, the committee finds that the likelihood of passing legislation to hold school districts harmless of these costs is unlikely, especially given the current state of New York's finances. Additionally, the committee fears holding districts harmless, the decreased funding and other necessary funding areas of public education. Further, the committee questioned how such action would impact local health care benefit and cost agreements.
That seems reasonable.
Okay. Okay, twenty-three. This one, West Putt wanted to break back. So this one says, NISBA support legislation that creates a process for tenure review and renewal occurring every five years throughout the career of all tenured public school employees. This process will include student, parent, and colleague feedback, will not be driven by test scores, and is intended to be instructive, not punitive. So first, NISBA said no for going forward, because supporting teachers and administrators as lifelong barriers who continue to refresh and reinvigorate themselves professionally can only lead to better student outcomes. Conducting tenure reviews at scheduled intervals will encourage growth and reward excellence. Wait, no, that was the rationale, I'm sorry. The explanation, I apologize. The explanation to not have it go forward was, ultimately, the committee felt that creating a process for tenure review and renewal every five years would be administratively burdensome for some districts and could result in a rate increase of costly thirty-twenty rates. So West Putt did want it to come back for a vote, um, saying consider new, uh, recognize the resolution. That, I mean, it, oh, they didn't give an explanation. They just said they wanted it, they just wanted it brought for the vote. Um, so are we good with keeping it off the table? Or do we wanna bring it back for a vote? I don't know, for me, I feel like, didn't we just recently, uh, but wasn't an extra year already added? For tenure wasn't three, now it's four?
I feel like every five years may be too frequent and maybe costly, but the concept of doing it, I'm not against. But me, but I, probably five years is too much. It'd be a big job.
That is, and it's-
It's a big job to do that, I mean, for a school district to evaluate every five years, every teacher.
No, it's, yeah.
If I can add, I think the capacity for a school district to have to do this, you know, administratively without all the other extra observations would be very burdensome. And I, I, I just personally, just my, my personal view is, you know, if you grant tenure to anyone, then, you know, you, everyone has to, all administrators need to make sure that they've done their due diligence, because, you know, tenure is, is permanent. So that, that decision has to be made seriously. So when you get to that point, the teacher has earned it. So I'm, I'm not in favor of this.
No, and I agree. I think that, um, you know, in, in those extreme cases where, for whatever reason, someone is maybe digressing from where they once, where you filled a case, right, um, against them. So I think this way, you're not giving an opportunity to target people unnecessarily.
And, and that, that's another point, and following up with, with Carrie's thought too, is that if you have a staff member that is having difficulty, you, you can put them on a corrective action plan. And the goal is to work with that individual to help them to be successful.
Right.
You know, that's always the goal. So you always have that opportunity. I'm sure Dr. Gosh could speak more eloquently than me, but I think that that, that's always there if you need it. And I have used that in my career.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, so I'm okay with it.
Anyone else with thoughts on?
Well, I think more towards, Carrie, I think, uh, I think it's too, I, it, it's too short. But I'm not totally against it.
Eric?
Yeah. I mean, as, as written, it's unmanageable.
Right.
I mean, I love the concept, but it's just not practical and either.
So it means great to not put it forward.
Correct, okay. Almost done. Six thirty-one, we're, we're, we're at the end here, so we'll just finish up. Um, where are we, twenty-four? Um, NISBA seek legislative support for eliminating the initial public straw vote in the process for the prospective merger or consolidation of school districts. Elimination, okay, so NISBA's saying to not put this forward and that they should not eliminate this straw vote process. The vote provides valuable information to school districts and board members and is worth additional time and expense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two more? All right, twenty-five, uh, NISBA should encourage laws, regulations, and policies that promote competition between VOSEs when they provide non-instructional services to districts. So this one, uh, NISBA said, the committee believed that VOSEs should promote and enhance cooperation between most school districts and other VOSEs instead of competition. The committee also noted that if adopted, the same sentiment could conceivably be applied to public school districts, non-public schools, and charter schools. West Putt just said that they wanted to bring it back. Both of these, so twenty-five and twenty-six, which are the next, it says both of these resolutions, um, put forth, they were put forth by two local districts, so it was part of the reason. Provide for districts to go to other VOSEs without a waiver, only for non-instructional services. That was twenty-five. So that was, they wanna be able to use other VOSEs specifically for non-instructional services without a waiver. So that's the point behind twenty-five. And NISBA is supporting, you kind of make it work with your own VOSEs as best you can, is kind of how I'm reading this, I think.
Yeah, it seems to go against the whole concept of VOSEs. As it is, a lot of what VOSEs does, they do it at a great rate, it's cost for us as it is. So I don't understand what they're trying to do is nickel and dime the VOSEs concept. I mean, it defeats the whole purpose of VOSEs, so I'm not beating that.
Well, I think they're just saying that when you don't have competition, you know, it's essentially monopoly, monopoly, and no one has any choices. And, you know, the only choice really now is provide the services yourself in-house, which of course, most districts can't do, which is why people go to VOSEs. I mean, you know, very-
We do have a say though yearly, right? We vote on VOSEs budget also. And I've been to, it was some years ago now, but it was a whole big budget discussion, uh, whatever VOSEs had put forward. And pretty much most of the districts were not happy. And they called the meeting before we had our meeting to pass it or not and had that discussion. So we do have, so yes, to your point, but at the same time, we do as a district and a collective group of districts, we have a say in what they do, because they're there for us.
Right, but your say is to vote against a budget when everyone else in the room may be voting for the budget. So that's the limitation to our say. That's what, I mean, that's just where they're coming from.
Yeah.
If we, if we are able to get the same services, either better or cheaper or wherever, from some other VOSEs, why can't we do that? I, I don't think it's a great idea, because then you have a situation now, you may be busing kids to, you know, VOSEs further away and all that.
Well, it's all not-
But I can understand. Sorry, did I say that?
Yeah, because it's not, where they provide non-instructional services to districts.
So that's maybe you can be able to have an opportunity to access something that you can't get at your local VOSEs.
But they can get the waiver.
But, yeah, because they're like-
So they just want to waive the waiver, they wanna make the decision themselves, instead of VOSEs offering the waiver.
No, I think, I think the waiver is just a step, and if anything, it signals to VOSEs maybe an area they need to move on.
Right.
So that's part of the concept.
So I'm okay with leaving it not. And so twenty-six, um, NISBA should encourage laws, regulations, and policies that promote competition for them between VOSEs, the same thing.
Yeah, that's the same thing, yeah.
So just, we'll say, keep it both, yeah. And twenty-seven, NISBA supports legislation that would require mandated reporters to participate in periodic professional courses related to the signs of child abuse as well as the process and requirements, uh, when reporting it. Wasn't there a earlier?
Yeah, I mean, it's like, oh, I-
This is just a, this is a similar one?
It's the same district too. It's just, this is more specific on just the one training piece. The other one is more of a big picture. This is specifically the one thing, and I guess that's what they don't like, that it targets its specific. But it's the same school district that they're voting for.
So NISBA said they felt that this, the additional requirement would create an additional unfunded mandate. So we, we said yes to another one, but this more specific one. Are we good with leaving it?
Because truthfully says it does not stop you doing it, or redo it.
Right.
And I assume most districts do. And there might be a couple that don't wanna do it or can't afford to do it, so that's all I'm saying.
Well, the fact is that it's, it's talked about mandated reporters. So they have a, they are due, they are bound to do this. To mandate them to have training, they still have the requirement to do it. You know, obviously, you'd like to see, like, our district where it does it yearly, but to mandate, I understand the concept of having to mandate all the districts, um, becomes unfunded.
Right, and this one is, ju- just relates to mandated reporter. While the other one, which is nineteen, so was brought in. All school personnel, including those who are mandated reporters and those who are not. So you want it to go forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the same thing.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
Okay, so, check the time, six thirty-eight. All right, so, um, I just need a motion to close the work session.
I'll make a motion.
Franzi, thank you.
A second.
Scott? All those in favor? Carrie, motion passes five zero. Okay, which session is, whoa. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry.
Okay, so, welcome, everyone. We're just gonna, uh, do our attendance again. We're here for our public session, the recording. And just, uh, present if you're here, Scott?
Present.
Carrie?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Franzi?
Here.
Myself, Sonia, present, so there are five of us. Um, this is it. And Jason had a, a work event, and Jason has a family, um, matter. Okay, so we just need to do our pledge. So we have a representative, I think, today. Um, Kayla?
Kayla?
Hi.
Hi, can you, uh, can you just do the pledge?
Our pledge will begin to apply to the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, for the promotion of the right to do as well, for the justice of the law.
Thank you. Um, we have, first up, administrators' remarks, and, uh, Dr. Gosh, would you like to go first? You're already standing up, so.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, my first comment pertains to our daily COVID reporting. Um, as I have mentioned previously in, uh, the weekly COVID updates, uh, for each school day, uh, we are required to report the number of students and staff who have tested positive for COVID-19. Uh, this information is, uh, updated and displayed daily at the New York State COVID Report Card. So the way in which the, the Department of Health, uh, asks us to categorize this data is onsite and offsite. Uh, it's somewhat counterintuitive as to what those categories actually mean. So for example, onsite does not mean that a student or staff member was physically on campus that day. In fact, that, uh, student or staff member could have been absent from campus for, uh, a week or, or more. The Department of Health states that all students or who are in a hybrid learning model must be reported as onsite for that day's reporting, whether or not the student was physically present on school grounds. So therefore, all students who are in the all remote models would count as the offsite students. Uh, so this categorization is, is why some cases appeared on the report card without us notifying the community directly. Uh, so please know that if a COVID positive student or staff member is on campus within that forty-eight hour window, either forty-eight hours from when they are symptomatic, uh, or from when, uh, they receive a test that eventually turns into a, a positive, uh, we will immediately notify all the students and staff that have come in contact with that, that student, uh, and then we will notify the community at large. Um, however, if it falls outside that forty-eight hour guideline, we will make sure that we still update the community, we'll do so in our weekly Friday COVID update. And please also know that this forty-eight hour guideline is not our rule, it's the New York State Department of Health, and it's what all school districts have been asked to adhere to when it comes to contact tracing and, and, um, and all of those protocols. Now, please also know that every time we have a case, we're on the, on the phone or on Zoom with, uh, the Department of Health and with Dr. Casaro. We make sure we work through our protocols and think through, uh, any eventuality that might come up with a particular case. Uh, my second update has to do with our ongoing assessment of our instructional models. Um, thank you to all the parents and guardians who completed the parent surveys, that we, we had a very good response. Uh, student surveys will be going out this week, as will follow-up professional learning surveys of staff from last week's Professional Learning Day. All these pieces are, are connected. Uh, we'll continue to have, um, staff focus groups and ongoing conversations with liaisons who are, are instructional leaders throughout the district, uh, to assess, uh, to assess needs. Uh, we are also reconvening, actually, tomorrow, our Teaching and Learning Subcommittee to review the information that we've gathered so far. Uh, but please know, one key theme that has emerged so far, uh, from the survey data, from the focus groups, from the liaison meetings, and from anecdotal conversations, is that teachers need more professional learning and planning time. Uh, many districts throughout the region, um, have added full release days or even half-days into their calendar. We aren't asking for that, we're not asking for a full release days or, or half-days. Instead, we are putting together a plan that would ask for some release time each month. Uh, a couple of hours where students would get out early on a Wednesday. We'd rotate the Wednesdays between cohorts, so no one cohort is impacted more than the other. Uh, but this would provide much-needed time for staff to coordinate and align curriculum, to plan for upcoming lessons and units, and to redesign our instruction for the hybrid and remote learning models. So we plan on presenting a formal plan to you at, um, our November seventeenth board meeting. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Harrington?
Okay, good evening. Uh, I'd just like to share that I'm pleased and proud to share that Ms. Hernandez, our, uh, Wells Middle School Assistant Principal, and myself, held our first Equity and Hiring Meeting on Monday, October nineteenth. Ms. Hernandez and I are co-facilitating this subcommittee, which is a continuation, of course, of the district's larger work with NYU on school equity and transformation. Our first meeting largely focused on demographic, uh, demographic trends, excuse me, related to our staff's race and ethnicity, as well as the overall ethnic demographic in the teacher workforce in New York State. Additionally, our hiring practices and procedures were shared with the committee as we continue our efforts to both hire a diverse teacher workforce and hire staff to demonstrate a high level of cultural competence. We are looking to extend further invitations to parents in the community, mindful that an ethnically diverse committee is critical to ensure rich dialogue and goals. So I'd certainly like to just acknowledge and thank Ms. Hernandez for her good work, both her leadership and passion have certainly been critical, uh, in helping to support this good work.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Hi, good evening. So quickly, we really haven't received any further update from the state with regard to our state aid dilemma and the state's, um, statewide dilemma. Um, we are nevertheless continuing to project our, uh, long-range financial plan, which will be presented to our Finance Committee in November and to the Board of Education at the November seventeen meeting. And really, that'll kickstart our, uh, budget discussion, uh, as we enter the spring. So that concludes my comments for this.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Banlow?
Good evening, members of the board. Just two updates for this evening. I first want to, uh, let you know what a great job Dr. Kennedy and Dr. Gosh and our district nurses and staff have done. Uh, the title of COVID Coordinator has not been something that Dr. Gosh or Dr. Kennedy have been trained for, but they have done a phenomenal job with Dr. Casaro. Um, just want to put everybody's attention on the governor's new microclusters that, uh, he's zeroing in on particular infection rates in zones. There are three different zones, there's yellow, orange, and red. And we are not, fortunately, we are not in a yellow zone, that would be the first warning zone. If the district, or any district, for that matter, gets into the, um, red or orange, that would mean that the district would need to move to a hundred percent remote. So we will continue to keep the community updated. Uh, just want to remind the community to take a look at those COVID weekly updates, which we do provide that information within those updates, that's, that's the first thing. And the second, on a very positive note, moving forward into the future with a lot of hope and great ideas to chart, chart a course for the next five years, I just want to remind the board and also the community that we have our Virtual Vision 2025 Community Summit. It's coming up next Wednesday, November fourth, at six thirty P M. And just please come out, listen to the presentation, you'll get some information. And also, everyone that is involved will have some input into the process, and there's gonna be a lot of ways for a lot of people to get involved, so we're really looking forward to that. So again, November, uh, November fourth, six thirty P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just for myself, I just want to say, you know, on behalf of the board, um, thank you. I, I don't know that you can say thank you enough, um, to everyone that works in this district and just makes every day happen. Um, I just am so proud of what we do here and, um, everyone here just pulling together all the time. And, um, just, you know, again, you look at other districts, and I just continually am so proud of what, what everyone does here. So thank you, Dr. Banlow, and to everyone, um, for all your hard work.
So, thank you, Ms. Beasley.
Um, and then, uh, we'll talk, I'll talk more about this later, but just a few things. The NISBA convention, we usually go away somewhere for it, but they're being done virtually. So, um, a few of us were on, Scott, Eric, myself, and, um, Dr. Banlow. Uh, it's virtual this year, so it's, it's been interesting, um, but it's still very informational. Uh, so I think at the end, we can, in our board comments, we can share about some things we took, we've taken away. It's three days, which I, right- It's three days, which I write today, tomorrow.
Thursday.
Um, and, um, thank you again to the board for sitting through that work session and anyone in the community who watched us work through those resolutions, which I'll be voting on for us on Saturday. Um, and next up, that's it for me. Next up will be our student representative. Um, Ms. Fox, I think you're out there still.
Welcome. So, um, last week was Spirit Week at the high school. We had three themes, um, Decades Day, a Color Day, and a Sports Jersey Day, which was, um, fun and entertaining for the high schoolers. Um, we also had a precautionary day off on Friday, which, um, we just wanted to know went very smoothly and we had no, um, issues at all. And we were back in school starting Monday. Um, in our social studies classes, students are actively involved in discussions, um, about current events, uh, particularly the upcoming elections. Um, and then just looking forward into the future, the SATs are gonna be hosted here on the 7th of November and, um, parent-teacher conferences are starting Monday and Tuesday, um, of this upcoming week.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, okay, so now we have presentations, recognition, discussion. And first up, uh, we have JFK Goals. And, uh, we have a whole team, a team to introduce the team, Dr. Banlow?
Yes, I'll, I'll take it from here. So we've streamlined our presentation this evening. So we have a joint presentation. We're gonna start off with John F. Kennedy, our principal, Dr. Frank Zamberlin, and Assistant Principal, Mr. John Conroy. We'll begin with their goals and then we'll go right into CD-Star with our principal, Mrs. Maggie Adriello, and also our vice, our Assistant Principal, Mr. Keith Allen. So we're gonna ask, uh, Dr. Zamberlin to take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Banlow. And thank you to the board for this opportunity to present tonight. On behalf of Ms. Adriello, Mr. Allen, and Mr. Conroy, uh, we welcome all of you tonight to our presentation. Uh, our first, uh, snapshot there, Chris, the next slide. It's just to give you a snapshot of where we are at JFK as far as enrollment. And we really want to thank the board for your support last year in adding sections to our kindergarten and first grade. By adding an extra homeroom in both kindergarten and first grade, our enrollment for the average class size went from 24 in both kindergarten and first grade to kindergarten's now 19.6 and 20.4 in first grade. And second grade went down to 22. Again, by addressing the needs of the class sizes that were growing and getting those extra sections, it were tremendous help to us. Thank you very much for your support. Uh, we'd like to remind the board, uh, that as much as we are preparing for the high school graduation this year, as Ms. Fox spoke, and we have the class of 2021 being prepared this year, all of that work starts at JFK. And we are currently preparing the classes of 2031, 2032, and 2033. I'd also want to give the board a quick snapshot because this will pop up in a slide in the future, uh, in the presentation. We have been economically disadvantaged about 40%, and that's the free and reduced lunch for about five years now. Um, we've been trying to address that through making sure that kids are fed and so on and trying to be creative with our ways to meet that need. Our Hispanic or Latinx population has been growing. We're about 44%. And this is 2018, 2019 data because the state data from last year, obviously, uh, didn't come through. And our ENL population and students with disabilities, just to give you, um, a little heads up, is slightly up in both areas. Chris, next slide. And just to give you a quick snapshot of some of the new hires that we've had, there was where to add those sections, but also, uh, to replace retirements. So we have, uh, Karen Merrill, Kristen Muller, Gabriella Brown, Kara Johansson, Devin Hickey, Kristen Snyder, and Jen Neil Mennett. Uh, these teachers all come from varied backgrounds. They're all seasoned. Most of them have dual or triple certifications in different areas so that we can meet the needs of students in many ways moving forward. Uh, many were coming from New York City, several from, uh, the White Plains area and Westchester. But all love being here in Brewster. Next slide. So the first goal for JFK, obviously, is to adapt the school to learning needs above COVID-19 pandemic. And we've been speaking about the hybrid and remote classes, and people are now adept at what these mean. One of the things I do want to stress and point out to the board is that this summer was a very long summer, but we accomplished a great deal. And I would like to thank Ms. Adriello and her team because with our work creating a master schedule, we made one that is adaptable. And using this crisis, this pandemic, as an opportunity, we created a Schedule A5 that could meet the needs of 100% attendance, 50% attendance, and we even extended it to 33 if we needed to go that far. Now, we are trimesters, uh, traditionally, but knowing that we had a semester mark where we give families the opportunity to choose again whether to be in remote or hybrid, we use that as an opportunity to build in possible quarters in the future. So we created a schedule that we don't have to reinvent the wheel for the next few numbers years out, you know, five, six, seven years. We created something that we believe can be adaptable over the next few years. And if we had to pivot quickly, we could do so. Uh, the other part of that goal was to keep teachers and community informed and making sure that we're communicating a lot. And obviously, to create a safe and welcoming school environment, as Dr. Banlow was fond of saying, "Protect the bear den." And I'm gonna turn this over to Papa Bear here at JFK, and that person being Mr. Conroy.
Thank you, Dr. Zamberlin. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the board, Dr. Banlow. Appreciate the opportunity to present this evening and hello to everybody at home who may be watching now or in the future. So for us at JFK, of course, especially with the pandemic, safety and health procedures come first, come second, and come third. So we socially distance. That has always been our number-one priority, based on guidelines. We stay six feet apart all day long, from the moment they enter the building to the moment they exit and either board can get in their cars or take a bus home. We separate in the cafeteria. You'll see a couple of slides in a moment that show some pictures of all of this. We have no more than four at any given table, and they are separated by plexiglass. We also have little hooks on the edge of each piece of plexiglass so that the children can place their mask, not drop it on the floor, leave it on the table, or have it somewhere where it can get dirty and infected. Classrooms, also socially distanced. I cannot thank our custodial staff enough. We all know in any district, any building, custodians are always the unsung heroes. But I cannot state enough what they have done for us to allow for the social distancing. We could have easily kept all of the desks, all of the chairs in classrooms. It was really the custodians that says, "No, we need to get them out. The children are gonna need as much space as they possibly can." And not just to give the children space, but it's that much of a fewer surfaces for any of the custodians to have to clean, whether it's in the moment because something happened during the day while the children were present, or it's giving them the time they need to effectively disinfect, whether that be after hours or over the weekend. We also do a daily screener and a daily temperature check when entering the building. That is located both in the front, where the children deboard buses and enter the building, and also in the back, where we have parent drop-off. We also have limited access when people come to the school. We really are still in a situation where we do not allow access from anybody from the outside unless it's a delivery. We've also modified that, where they no longer enter the building, but a staff member goes out, verifies, checks off, and receives any items that are left for us. And the same holds true for parents. While we have held many, many meetings over the years in my career, I will say this is the first time I've had several parking lot, formal parking lot meetings with parents. It's so important that we meet with them. And I'll share that with you in a moment with an upcoming slide. Next slide, please. So here are a few pictures. Uh, I think it might be backwards for you folks reading, but my top left, you'll see a picture of the floor. Of course, it's developmentally appropriate for the children here at JFK. What more could you ask for than an emoji smiley face to make you happy every day you look down and make sure you are six feet apart from the person in front or behind you? And the children just do a fantastic job with this. Top right is simply a classroom, socially distanced, as I mentioned before. Thank you again to the custodians for making this scenario unfold and happen. To my bottom left, picture of our cafeteria. You will see the transparent plexiglass there. You may not be able to see the little hooks on the corner, but they're there. And while there are six to eight seats at any given table, we do not have more than three or four at the most at any given table during this 50% hybrid time. And a beautiful picture, that's, I am a beach bum at heart, so I certainly love this picture on my bottom right, where you have the children outside taking mass breaks during their schoolwork. Next slide, please. Okay, as we mentioned, the mass breaks. I'll let everybody just take a peek there. That top left is again one of our temporal scanners. You see in the middle, the children are outside of a second-grade classroom. And that is actually a drizzly den. So you see it a little wet on the outside and dry on the inside. There are students washing their hands in the top right. Thank you again to Mr. Fryer. And buildings and grounds, they put in three additional sinks. So now we have nine. Three outside the boys' bathroom, three outside the girls' bathroom, and an additional three inside the cafeteria. Not only are they washing before they enter to eat, they are washing their hands before going out onto the playground. And in the past, we may not have been that concerned about this, super concerned about it now. Just as important that their hands are clean before going onto the playground equipment. Next slide, please. Just give everybody a moment to take a glance there, looking at our beautiful kids, all masked up. I think Dr. Zamberlin and I knew from the beginning we were not gonna have a problem having the children wear their masks. We can't get them to take them off. Next slide, please.
So our second goal is, and Mr. Harrington referred to the, uh, work we're doing with NYU, that JFK will begin to examine the following question. What does culturally responsiveness look like for all of our students, especially those within the subgroups at JFK? So we started out with these questions. What is my individual relationship to this issue and this work? Like, this will be a faculty group that reflected work. Administrators have started. We're doing a deep dive now into the root cause with faculty and administration throughout the district. Um, so that work is taking place. You know, we have to ask ourselves the question, are we meeting? Or do we have the systems and practices in place to develop this work? And what are we not offering that would meet, uh, the needs of all students? And what is actionable and what is our timeline? And one of the things that is actionable is inventory text. And I'll explain that in a second. And how will we assess this work ultimately? So we're heading down this path to look at culturally responsiveness at JFK. Next slide. Over the past few years, especially after the renovation, we, uh, prior to the renovation at JFK, we had brought all the books from both Garden Street, uh, out to both JFK and CD-Star. And then after the renovation, we started building at JFK a lot of the leveled resources that the teachers would need. And you see these kinds of shelving units throughout some of the areas of the building where teachers can go and pick up the materials they need, the leveled books that they need, and meet the needs of the kids in the classroom. Over the last, uh, couple of years, we've been developing a thematic approach to the books also. And what we've been doing there is categorizing the text to meet the SCP. So we've been putting stories, uh, magnificent thing for perseverance, you know, how to solve any problems or critical thinking. So we're putting these technical, these books, uh, in categories for teachers to teach the SCP skills. Next slide. But now we have to ask ourselves the next question. If I were a child at JFK, are the main characters and the heroes like me? When I'm reading a book, when a teacher is conducting a read-aloud, are the characters and heroes reflective of the kids and children in our classroom? Are the messages in the book something I can relate to as a child? So what we're going to embark upon this year is to start to look at our classroom libraries and those books we saw throughout school to see if they meet the needs of all of our children and using that lens so that when children read the books, when the books are read to them, that they become relational. And that is one of our goals for this year. Next slide. And our third goal is to work with CD-Star, uh, finishing that strategic coherence of plan's work on that profile for a graduate and developing the transitional grade expectations for second and fifth grade. And that work will be undertaken in the next few months. Pass this over to Mr. Conroy for both.
Thanks, Dr. Z. So our fourth goal, JFK will use the Student Learning Objectives. Those are what we call our SLOs. All right, it's a process from the APPR. It analyzes student data throughout the school year. We analyze the kids, assess the kids, excuse me, three times a year formally. Beginning of the year in the fall, the middle of the year, and then the end of the year. Both Dr. Zamberlin and I meet together as a team in person with each teacher, and we review their class results. And then we compare them and correlations, again, to the middle of the year and the end of the year. And we basically look at both individual growth. And then, of course, us as administrators for the building, we look at the grade level growth as well. We look at patterns and trends. The teachers do the same thing as grade level meetings, and they also look at patterns and trends, what they may want to add to the curriculum, pull from the curriculum, so on and so forth. We also look at, in order to assess the children, an MTSS process. So for those of you that just might not be aware, I promised a quick history. We used to do Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. We still utilize that system and protocol. And you used to have RTI, which is Response to Intervention. We took both of those paradigms and put them together. In the past, we used to look at things separately. Either it was an academic issue or a behavioral issue. Well, best practice is best practice. We combined those together. So whether it's an academic and/or a behavioral concern, often they'll overlap and intertwine. We utilize the same process. So I'm very proud of what we've established over the last few years here at JFK in terms of tweaking that RTI process and giving it this modern flair. MTSS stands for Multi-Tiered Support Systems. And what we do now, in the old days, we used to have these meetings. We'd all gather together, support staff, the teacher, interventionists, myself or Dr. Zamberlin as administrators, and we'd have our problem-solving team meetings and try to hash out what the child may need in order to grow. Then, we would inform the parent on all this good information we came up with. Well, we've decided that it's much more important and effective if we're proactive in any aspect of any child's life. So we incorporated the parents in this process. Forgive us, folks, for taking a while to come up with this concept, but it is super important, and we feel it's been very effective. Uh, we now have parents calling in, telephone, on their cellphones, on their laptops or their PCs. We, uh, just yesterday, dad was at home, mom was on her PC at work, but both parents were able to participate in the meeting. We create SMART goals for the children. They stand for Smart, Strategic, Measurable, Attainable or Achievable, Realistic, and Timely Goals. We also try to provide the children, I have to thank Dr. Zamberlin for this and his leadership when he showed up here at JFK. It isn't enough to close the achievement gap. It is not just enough that we have the children who struggle the most improve. It's also important that we challenge the high-end children. And enrichment opportunities are also not just for high-end children. Enrichment opportunities are for everybody, no matter what academic level you're at. I will pause there. I will pause there. And we will, at this point, I believe, turn things over to Ms. Andriello and Mr. Allen at CD Star. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conroy. Uh, but wait, here's CD Star and one of our fine young friends right there. So just a brief CD Star snapshot. As you can see, we have roughly about 200 kids in both third and fourth grade, a slightly larger fifth grade. And it's just important to note that there are about 15 to 20 students in grades three and four who transferred to local area schools. Uh, and did so for a number of different reasons. Some children went to school in a district where their parent may be working, just so that they had a common schedule. But as we begin to plan for next year, we need to keep in mind that should we return to a more normal reopening, that those children hopefully will come back to Brewster. And we just always want to keep that present in our thinking as we begin to plan going forward for next year. Our staff numbers, we have 27 general education teachers, 12 special education, eight special area teachers, which includes our band and orchestra teachers as well, three teachers of English, teacher, I'm sorry, TESOL teachers, and three each related services and counseling professionals. You can go to the next slide, please, Chris. So just a little glimpse inside life at CD Star. As both Dr. Zampolin and Mr. Conroy went over, we too have a lot of new protocols and a lot of new ways of going about daily life. A lot of social distancing, as you can see. We have students seated at one per desk at CD Star. We have two-person tables in most of our rooms. And this year, we're just utilizing one spot per day on that. Students are very much engaged throughout the day. And we're just adapting as we go and really trying to make each day a little bit better than the day before. You can go ahead, Chris, please. So our first goal that we're going to focus on tonight is right where JFK left off with their goal number three, which is to collaboratively develop the JFK/CD Star profile of graduate for the transitional grades. And then for us too, we want to really focus that for our third and fourth grades as well. And what we're looking at is what should we expect each child to have learned at the end of each grade level? We want to identify skills that should be mastered or in development or introduced. And it's not just academics. We're going to be looking at the social, emotional components, executive skills such as organization and self-management. And really, our long-term goal for this is to make it a blueprint for our MTSS process. Go ahead, please, Chris. I'm going to actually turn this over now to Mr. Allen.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us here. Uh, our second goal here at CD Star is to evaluate and collect data to better inform our building level processes, such as the MTSS process, DDI, and anything else that we're doing to really dig in deep, to learn everything that we possibly can about the child to give them the best support that they need and the best experience in our building. Uh, we've made use and we've actually worked with the technology department. We've been to Mr. Tralor. For this, in this tool, to really help us really unpack the use of Alpine. That's helped to streamline the process from JFK into CD Star. We use that Alpine for articulation and we actually use it to start the process of placement. Uh, we don't use it for the entire placement. We use it to start the process of placement to just to see the different groups of students. We use our game to better inform our teaching and learning in our building. All of our liaisons meet on a monthly basis at the grade levels to really talk about the data that they have, uh, the data that they have gathered for the month and see how we can best inform the practice and look at weaknesses and strengths and where we need to go, especially in the time of COVID and having to go through the distance learning process. Uh, what does our data show about instructional practices across grade levels, between grade levels? This right here is, is great because we, you know, we're bringing together all three grades all at one time to just talk about best practices and how we should move forward and, and what nuances that we need to do in order to adjust our teaching and learning. How are we going to gather, how are we going to use our data to enhance learning experiences for all students? This is what we, what we do want to, on a daily basis. You know, we've incorporated PLCs now this year on a very consistent basis for our building. Where teachers and teams, uh, by grade level, by subject area, even across grade level, we need to articulate and to share best practices of instruction and to review all the new things that we're going to be doing as we move forward. Next slide, please. So this is just a very simple graphic organizer. Just some of the things that we've been facing during the pandemic season. You see the green box, uh, you know, we've been challenged a little bit and we've actually been doing a good job, you know, supporting it. It's just, you know, getting people to the synchronous lessons and staying there and arriving on time and not leaving early. Uh, you know, we've been, you know, been challenged a little bit with Zoom and Google Meet. You know, and just, you know, a barrage of different things that are going on in terms of sharing things and interruptions like that. But these have done a great job. You know, we've used our PBIS, um, grade level meetings to speak about these things and speak to parents about it to best support us. You know, over here in the, in the beige box, we talk about our leadership team, our story of the practices. These are things that are still consistent from the previous years. We're helping with virtual parent meetings. You know, we're documenting everything that we possibly can and reviewing running expectations. Sending out newsletters, past the fives. And we're holding individual Google Classroom for different things. So it's been working out quite well, along with Parent Square. Uh, the communication, what does it look like at CD Star in the district? You know, we've had these, we've got virtual open, we had virtual open house. We're still giving out our award system in terms of All-Star tickets and Rising Star awards. Uh, we give updates via Parent Square, emails and phone calls. And we have virtual parent teacher conferences coming up to the fore this year. You know, the staff have really been doing a great job supporting each other and to prepare themselves and making sure everybody is in their, they're be able to be their best self. Uh, you know, they've been holding, you know, daily meditations and self-walks to help with exercise. They've been putting together helping emails with different coffee clubs. So it's really, really great watching our team coming together. Next slide, please.
So this is just another little glimpse inside CD Star. As Dr. Zampolin and Mr. Conroy said, we have been just so impressed with how well our students have transitioned back into school. And we see it each and every day. They seem to adjust just fine to having a mask on, to staying six feet apart. They'll give reminders to one another. Uh, everybody seems to know to do the, the little elbow bump instead of a high five now, which has been great. And while it's definitely different and it is, uh, new for everyone, it's still just awesome to be inside the building. And it's, it's great to see our friends back and to be around our students all day. They, they really are a phenomenal group of kids. So as you can see just on this slide, we have some examples from life both inside a classroom, when you are a hybrid in-person learner, and then also what it looks like when you are a remote learner as well. And it's just been great to jump on every now and then, those Zoom calls. When our remote learners are in class and I get to pop in and, and wave hello and see everybody. Uh, they are just doing so, so well. And it's, it's such a testament to how resilient they are and just happy to be back in school. Next slide, please. So our third goal for CD Star is to establish a consistent PLC model, which would then provide more opportunities for interdisciplinary and inter-grade level conversations within the building. And this has really been a goal of ours from last year that we're carrying forward. We know just how powerful it is when teachers have time to come together to have those conversations, whether it is around planning, curriculum, assessment, but just to have the time to do so. And it's easy sometimes for the data to get away from us. And really, we were looking for how we could create this within our schedule. And originally, Mr. Allen and myself, we kind of thought that we would have to push that off to next year, just given all of the new things that we were looking at having to accommodate coming into this school year. And just before the school year opened for us, I really have to give a lot of credit to our special area teachers because they came to the table with us and we were able to collaboratively look at our schedule and reorganize it a little bit. And our special area teachers are the ones who are providing the coverage for our classroom teachers to come out and hold PLC meetings. So what it is beginning to be established within the building is that every about eight days, each grade level content area or the related services group, interventionists and special area teachers have a set PLC time. And we do it first thing in the morning. It is not disruptive to the student day. It is not disruptive, uh, really to the teaching day. We're able to have a set schedule so everybody can plan around it. And this really helps to give administration timely feedback from staff. Mr. Allen and I have been walking around and popping into the meetings to try to answer questions in a very timely manner. But also, it gives our teachers the time they need to be able to plan going forward, which we know in any year is so valuable. But this year especially, when we are trying to continue to be moving forward with curriculum and instruction, but also wanting to make sure that we're doing so as a group. And it was such an awesome moment when we were able to sort of just finally figure that part out and realize we could do it this year. It has been invaluable to our teachers and to us as administrators. And again, just a world of thanks goes out to our special area teachers because they really helped to make this possible for us and we are super, super grateful for it. Mr. Allen, goal four.
All right, thank you. So, you know, our goal four is to create more opportunities and programs that incorporate students and families into CD Star initiatives. Uh, this was part of our goal for last year, it's a bit of a continuation. Uh, but for this year, just, you know, based on, you know, all the parameters that we have, you know, we're trying to expedite a lot of the email, phone holiday notes that we receive coming in from families in the community. Uh, we really don't want anyone to wait a lengthy amount of time to be recognized or be responded to. Uh, we've continued our partnership with BGA, I believe, with the president and vice, with the vice president. It'll come out every about four to five weeks. Uh, we talk about different events and activities that we can do despite all the challenges that we have. We come up with some real cool ideas and things that we're going to get ready to push forward to make it feel a little bit more normal for the students in terms of, uh, programming that they can have access to. We've been very, very forward with our invites of parents to try to partner with them to join a lot of our committees that we're being asked to be a part of and to create ourselves. The feedback that we get from the families and the communities is absolutely invaluable. Uh, we appreciate it so much and we're going to continue to partner with them to make sure that, you know, everybody and the stakeholders are included to make the decisions that will best support our building and our students just alike. Uh, you know, last year we had, um, we had big dreams of a, of a graduation, I would say. But then all of a sudden COVID hit and we had a big dream of the parade. But the parade was a huge success. We're really looking forward to giving the fifth graders the first ever graduation that I've known in this district. Where, you know, cap, you know, cap and gown, families coming. I can't wait for the speeches, it's going to be great. We're also, we haven't forgotten about our remote students. So this is probably one of the bigger things. Every recognition that we had for any of our students or activities that we should probably put together, we are adamantly making sure that we're doing the exact same thing for our remote students and keeping them included. We do not want them to feel like they're not a part of our building. They're, we, we would love for them to be in, but we know that that's not possible. And so we're going to do everything that we can so that they can feel the exact same way everyone else in school is feeling, to be recognized and to have the opportunities as well. Next slide, please.
So again, just a few more pictures of our students here at CD Star. And really, this, this final thought on this slide kind of captures what this year has shown us so far, is that absolutely things look different. When you step into the building, there's a lot of things that jump out at you as being different on the surface. But once you've kind of scratched that a little bit, you realize that the magic, it's all still there. And the magic is what happens inside our classrooms and our building every single day. And so, and I know that that's the same for JFK as well. And a lot of the anxiety that I think we had as adults coming back into this year about how was it going to go, really dissipated that first day when the school bus doors opened on that first bus and the kids came bouncing out like they hadn't missed a beat. And it was like they had just been here the day before. And that told us so much. Our kids are happy to be back, our staff is happy to be back, we're happy to be back. And it's just, it's been a great start to the year. So just on behalf of Mr. Allen and myself, we want to say thank you to the Board of Education as well as the community for their continued partnership and support. It means the world to us and we are so very grateful for it. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
So on behalf of the board, I just want to thank JFK and CD Star administrative team. You truly are our superheroes. And we thank you each and everyone and you for everything you do every day. Thank you.
And, you know, thank you also for just the time and effort everyone put into putting those presentations together. They were, um, they were great. I mean, it, even with COVID and even with, you know, 50% capacity and all these things, it's just so great to see, like, wow, so much is still getting done. And it's, um, it's just, it's great to see, so thank you. Okay. So public remarks, do we have any relating to action items specifically this evening?
No.
None, okay. Uh, so we can move right into action items. And first, approval of side letter of agreement for BTA regarding co-curricular clubs.
Yes, thank you. So this item reflects the second iteration of clubs to be approved based on the guidelines noted in the side letter for providing co-curriculars while school is under this present hybrid model. As you may recall from the last board meeting, this MOA provides a minimum number of meetings, the recording of minutes and attendance, and also the submission of a digital plan to further ensure that these clubs are effectively providing a rich experience for participating students irrespective of a hybrid schedule. So it's subject to your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, for this item. Scott, thank you. And the second, Eric, questions or comments on this item? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Five opposed, none, motion passes five zero. Okay, action item number two, resolution, recall of teaching assistants.
Uh, yes, thank you. So as you may recall from Dr. Gosh's presentation at our last board meeting, the changes in special education and ability for an increased number of our students with IDPs to attend school daily has created the need for some additional support. This resolution restores two of the four teaching assistant positions that were eliminated at the end of last school year.
Thank you. I need a motion, please. Francine and Carrie, my second, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Just these are the teaching assistants that would be doing the remote, that would be giving the support for the remote instruction for the integrated students?
Yes, that's correct.
Any others? Okay, so hearing no other questions? All those in favor? Five opposed, none, motion passes five zero. Action item number three, approval of MOA with BTA for assistant to the athletic director.
Yes, thank you. So this MOA redefines this prior position, eliminating the prior .5 FTE cost to the district. Rather, the proposed MOA adds a stipended position in the BTA contract. Rather, the proposed MOA adds a stipended position in the BTA contract to provide supervision and oversight of our athletic practices and games after school hours. It's important to note that this MOA reflects seasonal appointments to this position predicated on need. The proposed compensation reflects the prior total amount distributed over the three seasons of athletics in a given school year. No fall appointment to this position has yet to be made. It's important to note that the circumstances of this pandemic and the uncertainty of the winter season may be such that an appointment to this position for the winter is unnecessary. Again, this MOA simply approves the position. Any recommendation for an appointment would be predicated on a clear need that's driven by the reality really of a full and vibrant season of athletics. And it's subject to your approval.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion please for this item? Carrie, thank you, a second. Scott, questions or comments?
So Dr. Harrington, if the need were to arise for this position, we would see that then on the consent agenda?
Correct.
And then that, so the number that, the seasonal stipend? Can you hear me?
Yes.
The seasonal stipend wouldn't necessarily include the total amount. It would be on a prorated basis or how would that work?
It would be on a prorated basis, correct. If the appointment was made midway through the season.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, especially given the circumstances going on right now, the additional work that the athletic department under DiVerrado is doing. I mean, the other day he was the coach of the tennis team. So there's a lot more involved. I'm not a big fan of mid-year stuff, but I understand this 100%.
Can I, I just also want to add, kind of echoing what Scott just mentioned, with the COVID pandemic, you know, we have to make sure that the athletic director and the coaches are making sure that the students are screened, temperature checks, mask wearing. So as Scott had mentioned, there's a lot, lot involved. But I think Dr. Harrington pretty much summed up everything.
Any other questions or comments? No, okay. All those in favor? Five opposed, none, motion passes five zero. That's it. Consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. I just, I would like to just extend a warm welcome to Ms. Kelsey Bayer, to her probationary appointment as our new instrumental music teacher at Wells Middle School. Ms. Bayer's appointment fills the vacancy that was unexpectedly left by Mr. John Butera's son retirement. Ms. Bayer comes to us with one year of experience at the Marinerick Avenue Elementary School. A graduate of Ithaca College, Ms. Bayer is pursuing her graduate degree from Boston University. Her primary instruments include the piano and saxophone. Additionally, she has experience as an assistant to the marching band director at Arlington High School. We're delighted to have her join our music department. And again, I just want to acknowledge that, of course, hiring always begins at the building level and I really want to just applaud Mr. Clark and Ms. Hernandez for their fine work in identifying such a high-quality candidate, particularly given the timing of the nature of this position. So we welcome her, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion. Scott, thank you. And a second, Eric, questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Francine? I do have a question in regards to the assistant athletic director. I under, it looks like it's only four weeks. So does that consist of a full season or is it?
Prorated.
It's prorated, so it's only a portion?
Right.
And it's super necessary? We have half our sports running? For the season? So I just?
I would say absolutely, yes.
So there's, there are multiple games and practices. Yes, of course it is, the season is such that we're not running all of our programs, but there are multiple practices being run simultaneously with games. So again, traditionally, there has been an additional level of supervision to support Mr. Barone's work. And the appointment, of course, given the timing, is prorated.
Anyone else? No. It's hard to read faces with masks. I'm not sure if people are thinking and waiting for a person or good, so we're all good, okay. We can go to the vote then. All those in favor? Five opposed, none, motion passes five zero. Now we move on to public remarks that came in to us via email related to anything. And Carrie, you're gonna?
Sure. Um, we did receive one email from a parent just after our last board meeting regarding students with IEPs returning to school. As we know, there was a presentation on that at the last school board meeting. That email also raised a question as to whether ENL students attend 100% in person. And as I said, I know we had a presentation on the IEP part of it, but I understand that the email was responded to, but if there was anything else to add?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Yes, it was, the email was responded to and we did not bring back all of our email students. It was just our special ed students that we really took over at this point.
Then there were two emails that came in after the schools closed Thursday early. One sort of posed questions about the state's policies and whether or not there should be advocacy on behalf of children, I think, in terms of making sure that they have in-school opportunities as much as possible. And I know that one was also responded to, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
No, there's nothing else to add at this point.
Okay. And then the last one was just also about the school closing early for a possible exposure and just sort of raising concerns about that being disruptive not only to parents but to the kids and families facing, you know, any online learning difficulties. So I think that one was addressed too.
Yes, so any calls, any calls or emails that came in to us were addressed by a phone call. And also, I just want to add that the safety of our students and staff is our first priority. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. And we now move on to board remarks and committee updates. So what do you think to talk about? Do you have any to start?
Yeah, just wanted to update some of the community outreach. I've been attending the Brewster and Southeast meetings. They do hold them online. They do let us comment online and I've been taking sure to mention in Brewster Vision responding to parent surveys and such just to get the information out. Related to that, Brewster does have, actually tomorrow night, a Brewster Urban Renewal Forum that they're actually holding over at St. Lawrence, but it is a Zoom meeting and it's available to everybody in the community just to give an update of the village's plans for their, that have been going on for the last 10 years. They have an update and they're pushing out some more information. Just wanted to bring that to attention. In regards to Southeast Welfare Road, I did mention it last time, but I believe they're ahead of schedule. They've done some incredible work and they're, we should be reopening up the street and I'll be communicating directly with the school once that is completed. I know the Equity Collaborative has their mini-meeting this Thursday. It's a follow-up of the mini-meetings that we had. I guess they call them sub-coalaboratives, I believe is the phrase. And they'll be coming out on Thursday, so we'll have an update for the next meeting. The Communicator Panel, I think, is coming up in, it looks like November 5th. And I think at the last meeting we did agree that Jason was joining that committee. So if we can just make sure that he is updated in regards to that group.
Thank you for the reminder.
And I saw a side note on, we did get some notice from the West Coast Department School Board. They're following up on information right now, we're in the middle of NIZBA week, but they are having some roundtable discussions. And I believe, you know, some emails might have gone out to all the members. That's in November 16th through 20th, and there's a number of small little meetings. Some in the mornings, some in the afternoon, so they did take into account with the schedules. And then I guess anybody can register directly, it's at no cost to the school. It's just so the community's can share and get information together. Thank you.
I've had the question, so since we're attending the conference and taking notes and seeing what we can bring back, in the past, we've just kind of shared it now. Do you guys want to have, I mean, it could just even be like a 30-minute work session where we just meet and talk about anything we've pulled from it? Or do you want to just kind of share, you know, today, what we've got today? And then the next meeting, what we got from the remaining meetings during the slide board remark part time? When would you like to hear like kind of a recap of what we took from? Thoughts, anyone? Go ahead.
I just, with only one day in the books, it seems to be a little broken up if we did something. And then again, maybe we just wait till the next meeting and put all the information together and do one synopsis as opposed to breaking it up?
Do you want to do it like we, you know, have a work session before the meeting and then just share? And it's just that 30 minutes is focused on this conversation? Or do you want to, because it could, you know, I don't know how long it'll be, it may not be that long. Or just share it during board comments at the end?
All right, depending on the schedule that we have. If it's a light schedule, then we can have a brief discussion during the meeting. Otherwise, we could do it as brief comments at the end.
Okay, so we'll see how the agenda works, plays out and we can do it then. Okay, perfect. So I will recap that. I did want to ask the board, the 2025 committee? If I'm correct, it's November 17th, 18th, 19th are the dates? And is it, was the start time, I forgot, is it, is it 8:30?
8:30 to 4:00, hopefully a earlier release, but 8:30 to 4:00.
And in person, correct?
We're hoping in person, we're going to be watching everything. Dr. Gosh, am I right with the dates, those three dates?
17th, 18th, 19th, okay. So we need to, I know Daisy and Jason aren't here for the discussion. The 17th is our next meeting, so thoughts on, I mean, I could just shoot out an email, but we need two people, it is taking up three entire days, like during workdays. So I know, I think Scott and I tend to be available during the days. I don't know if anyone else is or wants to take the time off. Would you, you know, from work, because you have to, my understanding is we have to be committed to that time fully. So if you'd like, because we are missing two board people, I could just send an email to the board? You know, just, and you can all just reply, I could possibly do it or not or whatever?
Yeah, can you do an email? Because that way we can look at schedules too.
Yeah, okay. So I'll do that and then we can just reply to that. Just checking. Does anyone else have anything else they want to share?
Just quickly, from the Brewster Education Foundation, we kicked off our first fundraiser for the year. In the past, we have done a Corvette raffle. Obviously, there are challenges this year in the fact that we aren't able to attend, you know, football games or other school events and solicit people to buy tickets. But, so we're facing that challenge, but we are hopeful because this year, instead of a Corvette, we're actually raffling off a Jeep Wrangler. So it's a Jeep, which is a little, I think more people can see themselves driving around in a Jeep than in a Corvette. So we're hoping that the, the lack of ability to personally encourage people to buy the tickets at school events will be offset by this. So we will have the vehicle at a couple of different locations, including the Staples Plaza and Salinger's Orchard over the next couple of weekends. But obviously, you can always buy tickets at def.org. And I would just encourage everybody to come and visit the website and take a look and support what is, what has always historically been a real great organization that provides really unique opportunities for current students and recent graduates. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I mentioned our next meeting is the 17th. We talked about the other meetings coming up. And as always, the community, you're more than welcome to email the board and our superintendent at boe@brewsterschools.org. We do have executive session. We will not be returning to take any action. But I do need a motion for executive session for the purpose of, we have three matters, SEIU negotiations, administrative contract discussion, and an employee grievance update. And Scott, did I see your hand go up? Thank you, motion and a second. Francine, thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes five zero, we are off to executive session.